May we bow, excuse me, in an attitude of prayer. Thank you Heavenly Father for the night of rest. Thank you for this day and the opportunity to serve. May we honor you and please you in the things we do and say. Lead, guide, and direct us, I pray in thy name. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Again, good morning. At this time, we'll go ahead and call our meeting to order. And at this time, do we have minutes to approve or not this morning? Okay. We'll move right into commissioners' reports and comments. And Mr. Wagner, you want to go first?
Good morning. Welcome all the employees, staff, and guests. I really don't have anything to say today, believe it or not. Just welcome back. This is the first meeting after Easter break. I hope everybody had a relaxing Easter break. That's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Kiefer?
The only comment I have, I just would like to congratulate the winners of the town election in Hancock last night. I voted. I'm a resident of the town of Hancock. The mayor-elect is Roland Lainhart, and councilman Josh McCusker was elected to a term in his own rate. He was appointed to vacancy, and Richard Strong was elected. So congratulations to those, and thanks to those who ran.
Thank you. Mr. Harvey?
Good morning, everyone. It's good to get back together with everybody today. Look forward to the business that we're going to approach today. Just a couple of things. Saturday, I spent some time with Impact Ministries that hosted a senior forum. We had a good number, thirty-five or forty seniors there to ask questions of a panel that included Delegate Brooke Grossman and Dr. Brenda Cham, who's a member of Partners Who Care, as well as some other nonprofits that focus their work on addressing senior citizens' issues. We had a good number of questions about taxes and respite care for those that are stressed in taking care of a family member who might be at home with Alzheimer's and the stress that that brings, Medicare questions, housing questions. And I learned a lot during that process. I was surprised at the number of organizations other than our Commission on Aging that delivers Meals on Wheels that are actually delivering meals. One organization delivers about eleven thousand lunches a year. Another group is, two groups are doing breakfasts. There's some others that provide breakfasts and lunch at specific locations on a regular basis. So a lot of community activity. It was good to see in that activity and to learn and meet those people that are involved in that. I'm looking forward to the rollout of the comprehensive plan for our county, and I think that should occur sometime this month. And lastly, in talking to citizens around the county over the last couple of weeks, I was asked numerous times about some of my comments I've made about the financial situation we're in, and I got comments like, "We thought that we had this tremendous excess," and that, you know, "The county was rolling in cash." And, you know, there were comments about profits, and the county shouldn't be profiting off the backs of the taxpayers. And I had some good conversations, and I clarified some of the actual situation that we're facing. But, you know, it's nonsense that we had excess money. We never have excess money in a situation where we have unfunded liabilities. We have current debt obligations. We got one hundred and fifty million dollars or more in bond debt. We got funding for retirement. We got school needs. We got ADA, American Disabilities Act, and Title IX shortfalls in the school system. We need a new county courthouse, for sure. There's modifications, modernization, or possibly even a requirement for a new jail in the county, just to name a few, not even talking about all of the work that needs to be done to fund capital maintenance efforts across the county, water and sewer, EMS, public safety, and fire. So I find that it was probably irresponsible to characterize our debt that way, I mean, our financial situation that way, because it's created a mistaken image in our population about where we're at financially. And, you know, whenever you create a situation that isn't representative of the facts, it leads to bad decision-making and creates unnecessary concerns or lack of concern about where we're headed in the county by our citizens. You know, if we get some extra cash, like from a tax return, you shouldn't go out and spend it right away. You should probably pay down your credit card debt. You should probably save some money for that house you want to buy. Be practical about it, and that's what we should do. As we head toward the end of this year, we'll probably have a buffer of maybe nine million dollars from our operating account. And that's from good judicious management, because we cannot exceed our, we cannot spend more than we bring in. So our financial officer is responsible for that. We're going to hear from her later on today, but if we have any buffer or excess this year, it needs to go into our long-term spending, just like you would with a tax return. Save it for the obligations that we have coming up. Our responsibility to invest in the future. And with that, I end. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Harvey. President Klein?
Yes, sir. Good morning, everyone. Just a couple of little things. It's good to be back. I attended the opening ceremony of the Washington County Girls' Softball League on Saturday, and the highlight of the opening ceremony was that Steve Danfelt was awarded a certificate of recognition and a round of applause from the spectators for his thirty years of volunteerism to that organization. So congratulations to Steve Danfelt. Also during our break, I attended two Eagle ceremonies, Eagle Scout Court of Honor for Juliana Bronner and Andrew Davis, both fine young people. And then I also visited our 911 Center last week and thanked all the dispatchers and call-takers in recognition of National Safety Telecommunicators Week. So kudos to all them out there at the 911 Center. We appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Klein. Last two weeks, even though we were on a spring break, if you will, we've been very busy. I spent a day with Meals on Wheels delivery as a ride-along and quite an experience, particularly down through South County and the geographic area that that area covers is rather challenging to distribute the Meals on Wheels. So hats off to our senior center and the great job there they do three days a week with Meals on Wheels. Looking ahead, upcoming events tomorrow, April nineteenth, there's a TSA media event at HGR, Hagerstown Regional Airport. They're getting some new enhanced equipment for scanning and making sure that we are safe at our local airport. April nineteenth, Teacher of the Year Ceremony, looking forward to that. April twentieth is the April Bash at Warehouse Cinemas with the Chamber of Commerce. April twenty-first, Earth Day Tree Planting Event at the Hagerstown Community College. Also, on April twenty-first, we have Scott's First Aid Company Open House. And on April twenty-fifth, which is next Tuesday, we have a joint meeting with the town of Smithsburg in the evening. So keep all those dates on your radar screen, any of my fellow commissioners that can attend any or all of those events would be greatly appreciated to our community. Anything we've missed? Anything else, gentlemen? Hearing no further comments, we'll move into staff comments. Kurt, do you have anything this morning?
No.
Michelle?
Michelle Preby, Assistant to the County Administrator. I'm here on behalf of the Washington County Gaming Commission to ask that you reach a consensus to appoint Dawn Wintermoyer to serve a two-year term, beginning March one two thousand twenty-three through February twenty-eighth two thousand twenty-five, with eligibility for one additional two-year term.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion second. All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Pose, same sign, five oh.
I am also here on behalf of the Washington County Veterans Advisory Committee to ask that you reach a consensus to appoint Aaron Palmer to serve a first three-year term, beginning November one two thousand twenty-two through October thirty-first two thousand twenty-five as a representative from the United States military.
Motion to approve.
Okay, motion second. As submitted, all in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Pose, same sign, five oh.
Also, for the Veterans Advisory Committee, they ask that you reach a consensus to appoint Jamal Brown to serve a first three-year term, beginning March one two thousand twenty-three through February twenty-eighth two thousand twenty-six as a representative from the United States military.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a second?
Yes.
All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Thank you.
And one more. On behalf of the Washington County Recreation and Parks Advisory Board, they ask that you reach a consensus to reappoint Julie Sanders to serve a second three-year term from March one two thousand twenty-three through February twenty-eighth two thousand twenty-six.
Motion to approve.
Okay, all in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Thank you, five oh. Okay. County Administrator, John Marterano.
Thank you, President Barr. Good morning, commissioners. Just a few things, several of these have been mentioned already, but I'll go ahead and mention them again. But first thing I wanted to do is I wanted to thank our county staff at the landfill and the first responders for, you know, that we did have a fire, a small fire at the landfill last Thursday and Friday. The first responders obviously came out and helped take care of that situation. Our county staff was out there as well. So I just want to thank everybody for doing that. It turned out to not be too big of a situation, but it was a situation, and I appreciate all the help that we received on that. It's also been mentioned, last week was National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week. Obviously, we didn't meet last week, but I just did want to pass along to, pass along to everyone our thanks for everything that they do. And so I guess my microphone wasn't on, so I guess they didn't hear the first part, but I will just go back and thank everybody, our first responders and our staff, for the work last week at the fire at the landfill. National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week. Also, it's already been mentioned, but we do have, we will have a regular meeting here next Tuesday in the morning, then we'll recess and we'll reconvene in Smithsburg. I believe it's at six PM next Tuesday. Obviously, it's our opportunity to get out into municipalities and meet out there, to meet with our citizens and the town representatives. And also, we also do have a meeting, a joint meeting with the City of Hagerstown next Thursday, April twenty-seventh, and that is to talk about water. So as you may recall, we had talked about that, and we will be meeting at the water treatment plant with the City of Hagerstown. That will be a joint presentation from county staff and city staff to talk about water. So that is Thursday, April twenty-seventh. And I believe that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Any other staff comments? Hearing none, we'll move into citizens' participation. And it appears that we may have a number of folks that want to participate in citizens' participation. With that said, this is an opportunity for citizens to comment about an issue or issues of county practices and interests. This is not an interactive dialogue or question-and-answer session. It is solely time to hear citizens' comments. Please limit your comment remarks to three minutes. Thank you. And who wants to go first this morning? Sir, if you give us your name and address for the record?
Yes, sir, absolutely. Good morning. My name is Carlos Malat. I live at seventy-seven Amanda Drive in Smithsburg, Maryland.
Thank you, Carlos.
All right. Good morning, President Barr, County Administrator, Mr. Marterano, County Commissioners. As a parent of students in Washington County Public Schools and as the representative of the Washington County Teachers Association, I would like to first thank you for funding our schools and for the collaborative efforts and leadership of both the County Commissioners and the Elected Board of Education. When we work together, great things can happen in our community. As a WCTA Uniserve Director, I visit between one and two schools a day, and I see firsthand the mental health needs as well as the academic needs of our students. I also hear about varying levels of behaviors that educators encounter while trying to provide quality instruction to our children. The behavioral and special education supports that have been implemented have been vital in this regard. When I hear that there are challenges in the secondary schools, it is refreshing to be able to report back to my members that our new superintendent and his team are hearing and have heard their concerns, and evidence of this can be found in the WCPS proposed budget. The WCPS leadership team quickly hired new security assistants and implemented safety and security structures, helping to reduce distractions and improve learning conditions and working conditions, as student learning conditions are educator working conditions. When my members reach out to me about staffing concerns, I can again point to the WCPS budget proposal that prioritizes retention and recruitment via employee compensation to remain competitive with other districts and to ensure that we attract the highest-quality candidates to our school system while retaining the amazing staff that we currently have. In closing, thank you for your support in helping create the most optimal learning conditions for our children, and thank you for your consideration regarding this budget. Frederick Douglass once said that "It is easier to build strong children than to repair broken men." It is often said that children are the future. I say they are also the present, so we must treasure and nurture this gift. Thank you for investing in our children and our community. Thank you.
Good morning, President Barr, Commissioners and Staff. Neil Becker with the Washington County Teachers Association at one eight zero four seven Oak Ridge Drive in Hagerstown. Thank you for the opportunity to share a few thoughts this morning, and also a tremendous thank you to President Barr and Commissioners and President Williams with the Board of Education and Board of Education members for working diligently to work collaboratively. Multiple meetings in a joint format, both here and at CES, displays that collaborative effort to understand the needs of Washington County and the students in Washington County Public Schools. That collaborative effort will reap benefits, and the benefits are for all of Washington County, not just the students enrolled in Washington County Public Schools. Investment in education is effective and it is beneficial. I've often said, investment in education is economic investment. It's the foundation of Washington County, our workforce, and Washington County Public Schools has worked diligently to, excuse me, to maximize its dollars. And investment in education is actually more effective than investment in incarceration. Studies have shown that for decades. And if Washington County Public Schools can continue its good work to build the foundation for our future, the county will benefit. for our future, the county will benefit for generations. And, and I'll close with a few thoughts, that investment in Washington County Public Schools is a sound investment, and it can be reflected through the data. And I'm not often a proponent of looking at data and standardized test data, but Washington County's data often exceeds the data for the rest of the state of Maryland. Look at the MCAP data. Look at the KRA data. We have grown up to one of the top performers in the kindergarten readiness assessment, and that's due to the investment in pre-CAP. Look at the Washington County Public Schools graduation rates. We work really hard as a school system to ensure our students receive the best education possible, and those students deserve a fully funded budget so that we can maximize the programming for our students and the staffing required to meet the needs of our students from birth, because we do work from birth through twenty-one, from our birth-to-kay program, all the way through Marshall Street and JDC. So thank you for the opportunity to share a few thoughts, and I respectfully request that the Commissioners do all it can to fully fund the Board of Education. Thank you.
Thank you, Neil.
My name is Brittany Collins, and I am an English Language teacher at Springfield Middle School, and I brought my student with me, her name is Mariana. So if it's okay, I'll share, and then I'll let her share, okay? So I'm here today to advocate for a fully funded budget for WCPS, not only to support our communities now, but for the future. Currently, I'm responsible for instructing twenty-five of our nine hundred and fifteen English learners in the county. I don't know if you would believe me if I told you that I have a small caseload of students. I have coworkers at other schools who are responsible for fifty or more English learners in their building on their own. Our numbers of English learners in Washington County is growing, and we need our staff to grow as well. We currently have schools with split positions, meaning that they spend the morning at one st- we're losing instruction time for students, there's transition time, there's larger groups of students who are learning together, they have shortened session times, there's extra collaboration time needed between the EL teacher and the grade level teachers. It limits our ability to co-teach, which means that we can be in the room of the grade level teachers to support language inside the classroom, and it makes caseloads larger. If we add twenty-four teachers, we're going to be able to limit the number of teachers who are transitioning between schools and increase the number of minutes that we're spending in front of students, teaching them the English language. We've created a community where people can come to work, but it's imperative that students who are enrolling in our schools have substantial access to their English teacher. A teacher who not only teaches them the language, but the social norms, how to access community resources, and most importantly, to navigate the world of education and their choices that they have regarding their education. If we add these twenty-four positions, it would allow our English learners more access to instruction and content classrooms, as well as direct instruction of the English language. Adding twenty-four teachers provides our students more people to support them to be productive members of our community. Adding these twenty-four teachers means that more teachers will be able to maintain the reasonable ratio of twenty-five to one instead of fifty to one. In some cases, fifty to one, to learn the English language that takes four to six years to master. Adding these twenty-four EL teachers will continue to allow us to rank in the top three in the state of Maryland in elementary, middle, and high school. In closing, I want to thank you for your collaboration with WCPS and your consideration to fully fund our budget.
Hola buenos dias, my name is Mariana, and I go to Springfield Middle School. I'm in seventh grade, and I wanted to talk about a really important matter in this county. I wanted to talk about the EL teachers, how they help English learners, and how they're really important. One of my experiences when I first came to the U.S. was that I didn't have any friends because people would not understand me, and I could not understand them. But when my EL teacher started coming in class and telling me the meaning of words and how to use them in a sentence, it helped me a lot. She, she made me read books in English and highlight what I didn't understand and translate them in Spanish. I started learning more English, and I was finally able to communicate with people and make friends. A year later, it was my last year of elementary school. There was a new kid who didn't know English, so I had to translate to him, even though I didn't know the language fully. Our EL teacher helped us both at the same time, and we both learned and learned more every day. And now we're in middle school, and I see him making a lot of friends because he can talk to people with no embarrassment of being excluded because he cannot understand them. Now, I'm in middle school with more friends that are learning English, and I like when they ask me, can you tell me what this word means? I don't understand. Because I know they try so hard to learn English, and I know that one day they're going to remember how much they improved and be proud of themselves. In closing, I wanted to know that EL teachers are very important to help us learn English, and then we can also help other kids learn too. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mariana, can you give us your last name for the minutes?
Leon.
Thank you.
Good morning, my name is Rodney Gaiman, and I currently serve Washington County Public Schools as a principal of South Hagerstown High School. My career has spanned over thirty years, and it's an honor to lead the largest, most diverse school in our county. This year, we started with an enrollment of over fifteen hundred students, with over a hundred staff members working to lead our young people to a future where they have opportunities to give back to our community and add value to our area. On behalf of South High, I'd like to take a moment to express our thanks and gratitude for your willingness and time you have spent working in partnership and supporting Washington County Public Schools, especially when it comes to two primary fronts: safe and secure schools and mental health support. Students came back from the pandemic very different than when they left. These changes made us as school administrators reexamine how we effectively meet the needs of our students. At South High, Washington County Public Schools increased our staffing last year to support our most vulnerable students. This included an administrator to implement some behavior strategies, facilitate mental health support, and enhance our school culture; an additional staff member to redirect the paths of students on the verge of dropping out; and a social worker to help our students connect with resources that are helpful for having a positive school day. These additional professionals were both urgent and necessary. This year, they continue to work directly with students to provide increased daily mental health services and support. We recognize that many of our students have experienced significant trauma in their lives, and the stark reality is students spend the bulk of their day in school. Having the tools, properly trained staff and professionals, and resources has allowed us to access that care and make sure that each student can come to school each day better prepared to learn. The other significant difference we noticed at South High was the need for innovative safety and security strategies for our students and staff. After the pandemic, we witnessed a number of challenging behaviors that manifested in our hallways and common areas. Washington County Public Schools responded by hiring four safety and security personnel for South High. These additional safety team members are making a positive and noticeable difference in our hallways. They work collaboratively with school administration and staff, identifying individual student needs and connecting them to the appropriate school-based resources. These safety teams have improved our overall safety and awareness on our campus. These additions have made a difference in the lives of our students, our staff, and our school culture at South High. We can carry this progress into the future with the support from the County Commissioners. We at South Hagerstown High School and around the county are grateful for the joint work envisioned that is being shared. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gaiman.
I left you a thank you card recently and suggested if you had any questions on any of the things I've brought to your attention in the past, I could be available, ask for a little consideration this morning, my thought process could be better. My daughter's in third grade, I helped her, I wrote most of it a what-if paper about peace and getting along with others in support of the things she was learning in the school system. Talked about making amends, world peace could be possible if you started making amends first with your family, then with your community, and then work your way up from there. You know, if the Hatfields and McCoys in Israel and Palestine and thirteen women could get along, who could say it's not possible? It was disseminated to a small select group, including her teacher, but it was clearly addressed as anonymous third grader from Berkeley County, meaning it was just really an exercise in the thought process. Recently, I was able to visit the town of Kensington, Maryland, where I'm told I was born and raised, and thanked the Town Council Administration Office and tell them this was a really great place to grow up. You know, if all of us could claim that, what a wonderful world this would be. I am still offering my help, especially with the Citizens Emergency Preparedness Day, regional dam issues, and I'm offering to return, still here to Hagerstown with some reasonable requirements. Based on my estimation, the direction of the highway and the flow of the Potomac River, my family's home in Falling Waters should be in the state of Maryland. I'm still working and trying to help in that community as well. However, hostilities have recently increased significantly in the community. I am requesting you for help for my entire family considering relocation. We have all lived in Maryland, my daughter was born in the state of Maryland, I'm almost done, and my husband and I have spent and worked most of our lives living in Maryland. This is all, of course, subject to his approval. My ancestry is about to be proven, and I think Maryland is ready for a new flag. Thank you for your service and consideration.
Ma'am, can we get your, ma'am, can we have your name and address?
Stephanie Phillips, AKA Schlepo.
Did you get that? Okay. Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Kathy Larr. I'm at one three nine one eight Village Mill Drive in Morgansville. I'm here as a representative for the paraprofessionals and ESP of Washington County. I have been, I was a paraprofessional for over sixteen years at Marshall Street and Job Development Program. I am currently the Secretary for Related Services at the CES Board, just as of this year, just September. I have two children that both graduated from Washington County Public Schools. My daughter is a graduate of North Hagerstown High School. She's currently a WCPS paraprofessional. She's going back to college to get her psychology and teaching degree with, she's still debating the pros and cons of teaching in the county versus working in a private sector. Commissioner, she's a superb teacher. Let's keep her and all of those who are doing well in this county here, showing where our county budget makes the difference in those who stay. In September, I was hired as the Secretary for Special Education Related Services, where I assist with the speech pathologist, occupational therapist, physical therapist, teachers of students with visual impairments, teachers of the deaf and hard of hearing, and the Assistant, Assistive Technology Department. Working as a paraprofessional prior to this at Marshall Street School and the Job Development, where our county students who require the most assistance to learn the curriculum and basic life skills are schooled, there tends to be, they tend to be some of the county's most challenging behaviors, which are exacerbate, exacerbated with limited verbal ability. I have had the pleasure of hearing a non-verbal student speak. I've watched a student go from a strict behavioral learning plan to being able to do a job on his own with little supervision. It's rewarding work. The rewards are small and slow, but these students aren't going to be our county. Regardless of their ability level, they are doing their best of their own. The low and inconsistent staffing of late has made it hard for all of us to do our jobs for the best of the students. This is leading to burnout, more paras leaving for higher-paying jobs, some in the system, most, most outside of the school system, and a lot of them outside of our county. All of the paraprofessional staff that there are dozens of, know that there are dozens of open paraprofessional positions in the system that can't be filled because the candidates can make more of private jobs than at WCPS today. Every open position means the paraprofessionals that are there have to work that much harder for the same pay. The staffing inconsistencies is hard on our students, too. They just don't do well with constant changes in personnel, and it has nothing to do with their ability level. Our staffing shortages many days have had lots of new faces with people whose students don't know, they don't trust them, and those staff are attempting to just get them through the day. That doesn't include teaching. I'm here today to respectfully request that you step up your strong support for our schools, our students, and our community by fully funding the WCPS budget requests. Think about all the horror stories you remember or you heard about when there was a substitute. These students are going through weeks, substitutes. We support the Superintendent's budget because it's an investment not just in the school staffing today, but in the children of Washington County. It will pay dividends. This budget is a needed, need-based, and targeted to help address the challenges we're facing right now. If you fully support and fund the WCPS budget request for the benefit of the children of Washington County, the school system, and all of Washington County.
Thank you. Good morning.
Tara Eby, ten thirty-four, Hamilton Boulevard, Hagerstown. My name is Tara, I am the Regional Kitchen Manager of Williamsport High School. I've been employed with Washington County for thirteen years. I am the VP of MDSNA of Maryland. I am the past ESP Food Service A Year of the Award winner. I'm also a longtime resident of Hager, Washington County, and I graduated from Smithsburg High School. I've had two children that have gone through Washington County Public School systems. I know firsthand the importance of public school in our county. That is why I'm here today to respectfully request that you continue your strong support for our schools, our children, and our students, and our community by fully funding Washington County's budget. I am the Regional Manager of the Williamsport area. I manage five schools, twenty-nine employees. I feed approximately one thousand students for breakfast, which is a hot and a cold meal, and I feed fourteen hundred for lunch, which is always hot, and a hundred for after-school dinner program, which is hot and cold. We know these students, this may be their only meal, this may be their only three meals, and maybe their only hot meal of the day, so they look forward to these meals every day. These meals keep them in school, it keeps them, their learning environment, we take pride in our work and what we do, and we offer a valuable service. Food service positions are some of the lowest paid in the school system. Many of my colleagues have taken second jobs to make ends meet, or have also left the school for high and paying jobs. The educational supports, the superintendent- The educational supports, the superintendent's budget, this will help with some of our issues. Food services faces challenging in staffing with retention and the ability to achieve our goal, which is getting our children through the cafeteria in the day. I run a kitchen of nine. I've also pushed it through with just five people getting them fed. Washington County budget is a need-based budget, and this will help address all challenges. Supporting this budget-- I lost my spot. Supporting this budget means not just supporting Washington County employees, but Washington County residents and especially our children of Washington County. This budget is an investment to all of our futures. Please support it fully with the Washington County budget request. Thank you for your time and your consideration, and have a great day.
Thank you, Tara. Good morning.
My name is Kristi Irving, and I am here today as an elementary school secretary. Next week, I'll start my twentieth year with WCPS, and I actually really enjoy working for the county, and I feel proud to work for WCPS. But I've also seen so many changes and strains in the last nineteen years that I've been with them. I started as a paraprofessional. I worked in one of the county's first behavior-focused elementary special programs, so very different than what I do today. But starting that way and then becoming an administrative secretary, and I work at Rockland Woods, which is-- we have over six hundred fifty students. We have multiple district program rooms, which means students come to us from other schools to access what should be additional supports. So first, I want to express gratitude for the support that we have gotten over the years for things like the district programs and for staffing supports. I've seen firsthand, as, you know, frontline in the main office, the changes and challenges in both education and in our communities as a whole. The big picture that I see, it would probably be difficult to describe unless you spend time in a school today or someone close to you teaches or spends time in a school today. It doesn't look like it did formerly. I don't know how else to say that better, but I feel that the increased mental health issues that we are facing, the staffing issues that a few of the other speakers have brought up as far as retention for the people who work day-to-day with the students who have additional challenges, it's very hard to retain them. They are, as someone else just said, those colleagues of mine are looking for second jobs or go elsewhere for additional pay. And in the mornings, as an administrative secretary, you are actually filling all those spots. So it becomes very clear to you how much we need those people in the building. We need additional people. We personally, at my school right now, we have four openings we can't fill. One of the spots, we filled, the person left. We fill it, the person left again. And I feel like this is very much a needs-based budget because we have to retain those who are devoted and showing up to work with the students every day, and we need more supports because those mental health issues that are increasing, they manifest in behavior issues and unsafe behaviors in our buildings on an almost daily basis, for sure. Aside from that, I did recently learn, so this is just as, that some of our support staff are not even making minimum wage, the cafeteria workers, which I was surprised to hear, because we certainly couldn't serve and support that many students in a building without their support and assistance. With your continued support and investment in our schools and in our community, I feel like we have a chance to have these students get the quality education they deserve and grow into successful community members themselves, who will continue to add to the value and quality of life here in Washington County. So thank you for your time, and please consider the positive impact that fully funding the WCPS budget could have.
Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Anne Marie Hines, 18960 Keydiesville Road in Keydiesville. Good morning, County Commissioners and staff. I am here today as the President of the Washington County Educational Support Personnel Association. I am also a full-time secretary at Fountain Rock Elementary. I have been a WCPS employee for over twenty-three years and a Washington County resident for thirty-five years. I share with you the length of both my employment and residency as a note that I have been and continue to be very invested in Washington County Public Schools. I raised my children in our schools and have witnessed the budget discussions over the years. I am relieved to have the leadership of Dr. Savin and the executive team and this group of county commissioners, the elected Board of Education, at the helm during this challenging budget year. We have achieved so much at WCPS, particularly in the last decade, but the challenges of the past three years specifically have dramatically reshaped our student body. We have very complex student behaviors requiring intensive and well-trained staff. Special education populations are increasing, and our additional targeted staffing are critical to meet the requirements of IEPs. Safety at schools must be a top priority of America's schools, and WCPS has faced that challenge head-on with the addition of new security measures and our safety and security assistance. These vital programs, which were rolled out mid-year, must remain in force to provide safe and positive learning environments for our students. Additionally, the economic impact of the past three years cannot be overstated. In our county, private businesses have been able to recruit and retain transportation, food service, trades, and paraprofessional instructional staff away from WCPS for much more lucrative opportunities. For many, many years, a position at WCPS was competitive and very desirable in our county. It is critical that we provide our workers with a salary that can once again provide incentives to bring back the staffing levels we need to provide for the future of Washington County. Thank you for allowing to share my thoughts, and thank you for considering how the county commissioners can fully fund Washington County Public Schools.
Okay, anyone else? Hearing none at this point, we'll close citizens' participation unless I-- any second thoughts? Okay. We'll move on with the schedule then with Proclamation for Sexual Assault Awareness Month. Ashley Sizemore and--
Marsha Noel.
Marsha-- Marsha, no. Good morning, ladies.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Did you have-- did you have anything you wanted to say, or go ahead?
Yeah, introduce yourselves. Tell us who you are.
Marsha Noel.
Hi, I'm Ashley Sizemore. I'm the Director of Outreach and Advocacy Services here at CASA in town. We serve those that are experiencing intimate partner violence, sexual assault, and sex trafficking. This being the month of our awareness for sexual assault, we just want to thank you for giving us time to come and speak with you about bringing awareness to sexual assault. It is very prevalent in our community, and, you know, according to RAINN, you know, we have the-- the nation has the largest anti-sexual violence organization. You know, it's American, it's sexually-- and American is sexually assaulted every sixty-eight seconds. Sexual violence affects everyone, and with continued awareness, support from our community, such as Board of Commissioners, we can work together to bring prevention, education, and those resources that they need during those times of trauma. Thank you. We kind of had it going together there, but we just thank you for your time to acknowledge this month as Sexual Assault Awareness Month, and just-- it's also helpful just so everyone is aware of CASA as a resource for all residents of Washington County.
Thank you, and thanks for all that you do for the citizens of Washington County.
Thank you.
So we do have a proclamation, and I'll present that, and then we'll do some pictures. Do you want to come over to the front of the flags?
On behalf of the Commissioners, I'd like to present this proclamation for Sexual Assault Awareness Month, April 2023. Whereas Sexual Assault Awareness Month is intended to draw attention to the fact that sexual violence is widespread and has public health implications for every community member of Washington County, whereas rape, sexual assault, and sexual harassment impact our community as seen by statistics from the Maryland Coalition Against Sexual Assault. As twenty-one point three percent of adult women have experiences completed or attempted rape, and forty-four percent of women and twenty-three point eight percent of men in Maryland have experienced other forms of sexual violence. And whereas through prevention, education, and increased awareness, there is compelling evidence that we can be successful in reducing sexual violence in Washington County and perpetrators who commit acts of violence responsible for their actions. Washington County strongly supports the efforts of national, state, and local partners and of every citizen to actively engage in public and private efforts, including conversations about what sexual violence is, how to prevent it, how to help survivors connect with services, and how every segment of our society can work together to better address sexual violence. Therefore, we, the Board of County Commissioners of Washington County, Maryland, hereby recognize the month of April as Sexual Assault Awareness Month and encourage all citizens to join anti-sexual violence advocates and support services programs in the belief that all community members must be part of the solution and to end sexual violence. Presented this day in April by all five of the county commissioners. Here, I'll let you hold that.
Okay. One, two, three. Thank you.
Okay, we want to come over to the center. We'll have all the commissioners.
Wow.
They all like to get their picture taken.
Oh, you guys like to take your pictures.
Not everybody. Not everybody.
Just actually get a picture taken with y'all. She's going to want to send herself back here somewhere. I'll bet you. Trying to make him look good.
You need to see the post on there. Yeah? Okay. There we go. One, two, three. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for your service.
Thanks for having me.
Thank you.
We appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Okay, next item on our agenda is Agricultural Faces of Farming presentation. Our Leslie Hart, good morning.
Good morning. How is everyone this beautiful Tuesday?
All right, good morning.
Leslie Hart, Washington County Department of Business Development. I'm here again every come every month to present the two videos of our Faces of Farming campaign. Faces of Farming is an advertising and marketing campaign that connects our citizens to the farmers who produce food, fiber, and fuel. Washington County's agricultural community is the backbone of our community, and we cover-- agriculture covers almost forty-eight percent of our landmass in Washington County. I just want to thank you for supporting the campaign, and I look forward for more Faces of Farming campaigns to show you in the future. Just want to remind you that our ag is a hundred and fifty-three million dollars in sales and market value. That number I give you every year is from national statistics. That number should change by the end of this year, and I look forward to giving you a much larger number than we've seen in the past. So today, we are focusing on goats, equine, and poultry. Today's featured videos, the Faces of Farming, are Sunny Days from the Fair Play area and DeParma Farms of the Fair Play area. So PR, if you can roll that beautiful bean footage.
Hi, my name is John Damski. My farm is DeParma Farms. We are located on DeParma Lane in Fair Play, Maryland. I come from a family that is-- they're milk farmers, dairy farmers. Guess about thirty-five years ago, I started raising my own chickens for eggs, and that kind of migrated into broilers and turkeys, and I just raised them for my own family. And I did that for probably twenty-some years, and then when we moved up here, we made this-- we decided to take the next step, which is to make this a more commercial affair. The sense of community and the sense of-- even though you're on larger pieces of ground, the sense of family is very, very prevalent up here. The sense of family pervades, just not your family, but your neighbors, especially during COVID. If you notice during COVID, everybody was always looking out for each other up here. Our chickens are raised on pasture. Our hogs are raised on pasture. You don't see cages around here. My layers, they come out of the chicken coop at daybreak. The solar raises the door, and they have three acres, and the only reason it's three is because they're protected on three. And they go out and scrounge for food and live a chicken's life, the best it could be. We raise chickens and we raise our animals the same way we did thirty years ago, which was our family, for our family. So it's important for people that are in the community to realize that farmers, for a farmer, this is a passion. It's a calling. It's important that when I get eggs here from my lean, that they're the very best eggs that we can put on the table. We don't short-shift. We don't short the product. I have zero problem eating anything that I raise. If I'm going to sell to you, I would sell-- I give it to my family, and that's important. Put a little bit of yourself back into whatever you're doing.
My name is Carissa Schneider, and this is Sunny Days Farm, located in Fair Play, Maryland. We first moved up here from Florida due to a job offer my husband had, and the minute we crossed into Maryland, I was just in love. The landscape, the mountains. I've always dreamt of having a farm with a running creek, which we have here, so it was just perfect. We raise Nigerian dwarf goats, a lot of them. That's kind of grown a lot. We also have some peafowl, chickens, various other animals from time to time. We do board some horses. We also have a couple horses of our own. We also have a couple horses of our own. Um, I used to ride and train full-time before moving up to Maryland, so I still do a little bit of that, but the majority of the horses here are boarders. I've not grown up on a farm. Everyone always asks me if I did, but I've always loved animals. Um, at some point, I decided I wanted to become more self-sufficient, and our family become more self-sufficient. That is why we farm. We have the milk from our goats, I can make cheese with it. We gather the eggs from the chickens, we grow our garden, um, we, the stuff that we don't do ourselves, we get from local farms around. Uh, the goat feed is, is from a local farm, I get my hay from local farmers nearby. It's just really important that our children understand where their food comes from. You have to have farms to, to feed the people, uh, you know? Very important.
I just wanna add, in the DeParma Farms, I don't know if you saw that puppy, um, that's a brother and sister um livestock guardian dogs. They're both gonna top out at about a hundred and eighty pounds. Um, so they're very small right now. Maybe I'll bring back some video when those dogs reach their full potential to protect little tiny chickens.
Bring them in.
Thank you very much, have a great day.
Thank you, Leslie. Okay, next item is uh twenty twenty-four General Fund and Capital Budget. Michelle, good morning.
Michelle Gordon, Chief Financial Officer. The fiscal year twenty-four draft regeneral fund budget was updated to reflect changes to individual departments based on the salary scale adjustments for grades twelve and under. Um, it did include a revised salary scale in your packet as well. As you know, Governor Moore did speed up the timeline for increasing the Maryland minimum wage fifteen dollars an hour to January first of twenty twenty-four. Um, so grades one and two were adjusted to reflect that. Um, the amount of the increase can be absorbed within each department. Um, the overall budget did not change based on any of those adjustments. General fund budget includes two-hundred-eighty-one million, sixty thousand, three-hundred-and-fifty dollars for fiscal year twenty-four. The CIP budget includes fifty-six million, four thousand dollars for fiscal year twenty-four. And all other funds include sixty-one million, three-hundred-five thousand, six-hundred dollars. The overall budget for fiscal year twenty-four is three-hundred-ninety-eight million, three-hundred-and-sixty-nine thousand, nine-hundred-and-fifty dollars. It is a three-point-nine-seven percent increase over the prior year. Like to request a consensus of the Board of County Commissioners to take the budget to um, as presented to the public budget hearing on May the ninth of twenty twenty-three.
Okay, with me.
Yeah, I'm good. Okay. We need a consensus or a vote?
Consensus.
General consensus.
Just consensus, I think we have that, so.
Sorry, thank you.
Next item is uh budget adjustment, MLK Building and Administration Annex Utilities.
Uh, staff is requesting a budget adjustment to increase the fiscal year twenty-three budgeted utility expenses for the MLK Building and the administrative annex. The fiscal year twenty-three uh proposed budgets for utilities were based on a four-year average and took into account forecasted rate changes as well as any other known variables. The MLK Building uses oil for heat, and the price per gallon has increased significantly in fiscal year twenty-three. Uh, county staff also moved into the new Northern Avenue uh location in April of twenty-twenty-two. We did not have history for which, with which to build off um that fiscal year twenty-three budget, and the cost of electric and natural gas has been higher than we anticipated. The amount of that budget revision is ninety thousand dollars, and it is being offset um by increases, unexpected increases in recordation tax for fiscal year twenty-three. Any questions?
Motion to approve.
Okay, motion and second. All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Pose, same sign.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. Next item, uh contract renewal, purchase fourteen-seventeen electrician uh services at county facilities. And before we get started, I'm gonna re- recluse myself from participating in the vote. Jeff, you may wanna take this one.
Please introduce yourself in the matter.
Brandy Nagle-Bairn, the Purchasing Department.
Danny Hickson, Deputy Director, Public Works.
The recommendation I have for you this morning is the contract renewal for PUR fourteen-seventeen electrician services for county facilities. Move to renew the contract for electrician services for county facilities with Cube Electric out of Williamsport, Maryland, per the rates indicated on the letter dated March twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-three. Cube is requesting an approximate five percent increase on the hourly rates, current hourly rates. On June fourth, twenty nineteen, the board originally awarded the contract for electrician services for, to Cube Electric as the rates indicated below in the table. This contract was for a period of one year, it had four consecutive one-year renewals. This is the fourth and final one-year renewal. This also serves the Health Department, Children's Village, Museum of Fine Arts, County Housing Buildings, and the Washington County Free Library. Funding is available in various department line items for each one of the facilities.
You, did I, uh, you said five percent increase? That seems fair to me, and fourth and final, what's, tell me what that means, fourth and final year for renewal. Yeah, what happens is next year?
We'll rebid it.
Rebid the whole thing, okay.
Yes.
Motion to approve. Second.
Yeah, I, I'm, yeah, and I second it.
Yeah, but I want you to handle this one.
Oh, oh, I thought, I forgot. I was looking for you for a response.
I second.
Uh, yeah, I can't chair it. Thank you.
I'm sorry, Jeff, thanks.
We have a first and a second, is there any further discussion?
I have a question, Brandy, if I can, um, or Danny. Um, the five percent increase, uh, is that set in a contract, or, or is that just the figure that they came up with for this particular year? And how does that, how might that compare to other contracts that we have? Five percent seems, um, in the environment and everything that we've been told, um, five percent is a lot less than I was expecting.
That, that's correct. It is not written in the contract, there is no escalation clause in there. Um, but you can see throughout the last five years, they've, they've asked between three and four-point-eight, so it was a little higher this year, but what we normally see is anywhere from three to five, possibly six to seven sometimes, but this is actually average compared to other ones that will become.
Okay, good to know, thank you.
All right, is there any further discussion? Have a first and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Four aye, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Back to you.
Thanks, Jeff. Next item, procurement of cyber intrusion detection and monitoring systems. Uh, good morning, Josh.
Good morning. Josh Fonya, Division Director of Information Systems. I have a proposal uh to purchase uh cyber intrusion detection and monitoring system to augment our existing capabilities. Uh, I did wanna point out, there's a slight typo, the amount is two-twenty-seven, five-twelve, and seventy-five cents, so a one-hundred-dollar, three-cent difference there. Any questions?
No, you know, we just need to keep on top of, no more incidents, I hope, so I'd motion to approve.
Second.
Okay. Motion second on the floor to approve as submitted. All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, pose, same sign. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Josh. Okay, next item is EMS staffing transition. Uh, good morning, Dave.
David Hayes, Director of Emergency Services.
David Chisholm, Deputy Director of Emergency Services.
Dale Fishak, President, Washington County Volunteer Fire and Rescue Association.
Commissioners, we're here today um to discuss the uh, one more introduction to a planned EMS staffing transition for volunteer corporation employees into county employment. Before we get there, I just wanted to take a minute, um, this was scheduled almost a month ago, and I had a, a medical issue of myself, and the Commissioners were very gracious and understanding, and uh allowed us to bring this back, but uh more importantly, the outpouring of support and uh well wishes, I appreciate that, not only from the Commissioners, but almost all county department heads, so I appreciate that. So, moving forward, um, the recommendation today would require two motions. The first motion would be to authorize the Division of Emergency Services to begin a transition of volunteer EMS corporation staffing into county employment, beginning with the Williamsport Fire EMS and Smithsburg Emergency Medical Services. The second motion we would need is to authorize the Division of Emergency Services and the Ba- the Office of Budget and Finance to establish a county-wide EMS billing program, and as such, move the EMS billing services to the county at such time the individual EMS companies transition their career employees into county employment, and to hire one EMS billing specialist, which has included an EMS uh transition staff and one HR technician. Uh, the EMS billing specialist would work for Budget and Finance, the HR would work for Human Resources. So the report itself is, throughout the fall and winter of two thousand twenty-two and two thousand twenty-three, county staff held informal discussions with each of the eight volunteer EMS companies in reference to their interest and consideration of voluntary transitioning their current EMS employees into county employment. As of today, five of the eight EMS companies have expressed an interest in being considered for such a transition. Uh, discussion, staff has developed a transition process that would begin the transition of the current volunteer corporation career staff into county employment. Staff's recommendation includes transitioning the volunteer EMS corporation field and operations administrative career staff to county employment, all of who would be needed to manage the transition, ongoing needs relative to personnel management and EMS billing. It is recommended that the Williamsport Volunteer Fire EMS and the Smithsburg Emergency Medical Services, both of which have formally agreed to the proposed transition plan, be the first two companies to transition staff to county employment. Employees of those companies who agree to move forward in the transfer would do so subject to the following requirements and conditions. They would complete a county application for employment, they would complete, pass a background check, they would complete, pass a psychological evaluation, and they would complete, pass EMS-based physical abilities test. These processes are similar to what current EMS, uh, I'm sorry, current DES field staff have completed prior to being hired by the county. The anticipated cost for the transition is based on the actual current salaries of the employees of the eight volunteer EMS companies. It is staff's recommendation that the county bring the corporation's sta- EMS career staff into county employment at close to their current hourly rate. This rate will be determined by using the hourly rate at the primary EMS employer. The volunteer corporation employee would also enter county employment into the retirement and pension system relative, and also receive vacation accruals and will be eligible to participate in all other county benefit package as a new county employee first year. Any past or current liabilities and/or obligations between the volunteer corporation and the volunteer corporation employee shall remain the sole responsibility of the volunteer corporation. As the transition of a volunteer EMS company's career staff occurs, the county will no longer provide that company with an EMS staffing subsidy or a health insurance reimbursement, and the county shall be entitled to eighty percent of net EMS billing revenues. The county will also begin preparations to transition EMS billing into a county-wide EMS billing program within county government. As the volunteer EMS corporation's career staff transition to county employment, the company and the transition, the county and the transitioning EMS company will also begin the process of transitioning their EMS billing into the county's EMS billing program. A specific MOU for the use of the facility, apparatus, and equipment that is owned by each of the volunteer corporations will be finalized and executed between the county and the individual volunteer corporation prior to any transition of county staff, of corporation staff into county employment. The fiscal impact for the planned transition is seven-hundred-and-seventeen thousand, nine-hundred-and-sixty dollars and sixty-eight cents, that's the first two companies, plus the HR technician and the EMS billing specialist. We have concurrences from myself, the Chief Financial Officer, the County Administrator, the Washington County Volunteer Fire and Rescue Association President, and the Williamsport Volunteer Fire EMS and Smithsburg Emergency Medical uh Services. No alternatives presented, and there are no attachments.
David, I had a couple quick questions. Uh, that uh, is this all contingent in a motion uh based on approval of MOU by all parties?
Yes.
Is that, should that be in a motion?
Yes, and, and we listed that in uh, in the details of, of our planned transition, that no formal transition of staffing would occur before an MOU is executed between the Board of County Commissioners.
Has everybody had a chance to review a tentative MOU, or don't we have one established?
We do not have a formal written document, uh, that now is with legal from a prior meeting, and then, but what I would say is, they have presented with all of the information and stated requirements that would be in the MOU, meaning the eighty percent billing, the use of the facilities, um, the apparatus.
You said, you said that uh, the seven-hundred-and-seventeen thousand, nine-hundred-and-sixty dollars, sixty-eight cents, you said plus two specialists, is that, you meant to say including, is that figure included?
It includes, so in parentheses, it lists the first two companies, the HR technician and the EMS.
That includes that.
That's seven, six, seventeen, all inclusive.
Okay, and then, I think we budgeted a million, and you, do you foresee having to hire a couple more uh EMTs or?
We do to make up staffing, but again, those numbers are also budgeted in that seven-seventeen.
To hire a couple more?
Yes, we have, we have budgeted FTE and their equivalents at the numbers we need to properly staff these stations, and that is all included in the seven-seventeen.
And I think that's it for me, I was still hashing around a third-party billing, but everybody seems to think that, do it ourselves. Okay, that's all I had for right now.
I have uh, two questions. I know this may be part of the MOU, which is yet to be finalized. Um, some of the conditions for bringing employees over from EMS companies to county includes the EMS-based physical abilities test. And I certainly understand, we want the employee to be safe, we want the patient to be safe, that, I, I, I understand. We had talked about someone who's been in that profession, who's clearly doing the job, but if they have trouble passing, there might be some leniency given, or can you explain that a little bit, just one of the concerns I've heard?
Yeah, absolutely. So the goal in what we're doing is to run a process that has integrity, but it also has an understanding that these people have been doing this job for quite some time, in many cases. So with the PAT or the physical abilities test itself, what we had discussed, if somebody had a problem passing that, we would still transition them, and then work in some type of physical improvement program that actually is gonna benefit them as well, to help them get to the point where they could get by that test. And we do not expect this to be anything outside of what you would expect in a normal operation of what they're doing today. So, uh, as an example, and this is a paraphrase, it might include carrying a cardiac monitor and a first aid bag up two flights of steps. That is all stuff that you should expect that they're going to, and they are encountering any day, so if somebody struggles with that, our intent is to try to do a work improvement plan that helps them get by that test.
Okay, and my second question for right now, um, the fiscal impact, first two companies, one HR tech, one EMS billing specialist. For the first two companies, how many FTEs or how many individuals does that include?
So the total, the total would be nineteen, seventeen of which would be field staff. So the nineteen includes your HR.
Okay.
Uh, technician and your EMS billing specialist.
Thank you.
Okay, so, we're waiting for an MOU that addresses facility, apparatus, equipment, et cetera, but we're also waiting for the policies for this EMS as a county-run entity, correct? The standards, the procedures, the policies, the rules of the game for how EMS will actually be managed and run, everything from work schedules to, you know, human resource issues to this issue here of, that was just brought up by Wayne. Um, he said, we're gonna work with people to try and ameliorate if they're not up to the physical standard, for how long? And what's the consequence if they don't? Are we gonna carry them and while they're not able to do the job to the standard? And if we have a standard, you should apply the standard, otherwise, you know, the standard's there for a reason, correct? That it's a judgment that you need to be able to do this to, to do your job. So, those details of, well, how long, and what's the consequence, and does everyone know the rules of the game? The prospective employee coming on board, as well as us, to be able to adjudicate it if we have someone who refuses to actually respond to a development plan to get them to where they need to be. So- to where they need to be. So we need just, not just the memorandum of agreement, but the other policies in place and to be reviewed by HR and our attorneys and others, okay? So that we can do this. It's, you know, I fully support this, but we got to make sure we have our i's dotted and our t's crossed so we don't get into a situation where that ambiguity that, you know, creates rocks being thrown from one side to the other and blame game developing and then the county being held to some responsibility and having an employee that isn't able to do the task. Does that make sense, Dave?
Yes.
Okay.
So you're looking, and I agree with everything Wayne, Derek, and everybody said. I think we don't want problems after the fact. And, you know, you know, I fully support it. Just want to, again, make sure things are done properly. And they're doing, I have my doubts if anybody will fail that. I could probably, what you've described even, you could probably even transition me. But that might be, that might be a leap. But, so you're looking for two motions. How do we make sure? Do we add anything to these two motions to cover what we've discussed? Or I guess I'd look for legal for that.
Well, isn't the motion we're saying is to proceed until we're able to see the policies, the memorandum?
Intention upon a final MOU. Is that what we're hearing?
Yeah, I think you've summed it up accurately.
And inside that MOU.
Just to formally begin the process that establishes an MOU, it establishes the policies that we're speaking to, and all that would be in place before we physically transition employees.
And make the final legal obligation. But what we're actually doing is communicating to the public that we're moving out and to the people in the EMS world that we're moving off the dime and we're taking action and we're beginning this transition with the intent of eventually expanding it.
And I would add to that, I think is the important part, too, is this is not going to happen next week. This is still months away and maybe even beyond that. I don't know. So there's a lot of work with legal and HR and even the county administrator and potentially even some conversations with the board about the MOU once we get to a final product to make sure that you're comfortable. But I think you've summed it up well as this is the formalization of that process.
Well, Dale, do you, and Dave, you concur with what's been said here? Or you have any comments?
I concur. I think you're all on the right path. I think the questions that were asked here and the concerns are valid concerns. And I think Commissioner Harvey summed it up best that we're showing the EMS community and the public that we're taking a step to provide assistance in the EMS world. I've worked on this with you all, well, some of you that are incumbents for four years, and it's been worked on longer than that. So we are taking a step in the right direction. And I think all the details that you discussed are things that can be worked out and negotiated. So.
But we're mostly.
Thank you for being there.
But we're most of the way there, I think.
We are. Yep, yep. We're 90% over the hump and we just got some details to work out. And I think we're in a good position. And I think it will, there's going to be a lot of watching of the first two companies and the transition. And I think that will provide the model as we move forward.
Yeah, I'd make the first motion, motion to, a motion to authorize the Division of Emergency Services to begin a transition to the volunteer EMS corporation into county employment, beginning with the Williamsport Fire and EMS and Smithburg Emergency Medical Services.
Could we just do both at one time or you want them separate?
Okay, then.
Oh, you know, why don't you make them both?
Okay, also a motion to authorize the Division of Emergency Services and the Office of Budget and Finance to establish a countywide EMS billing program and as such, move the EMS billing services to the county. At such time, an individual EMS company's transition their career employment, employees into county employment and hire one EMS billing specialist, including an EMS, EMS transition staff and one HR technician.
With one addition, which is pending.
I get a second first, all right?
Okay, I'm just.
Do a second and then add to it.
Well, it's the wordage here, but okay.
You can do a second and add to it, I think.
Okay, I'll wait then.
Second.
Okay, now discussion.
Go ahead.
Now discussion?
Yes.
Okay, can we add to that pending final completion of the review by legal?
Of the MOU.
Of the MOU and the policies.
I think you said it's kind of in there, but this makes it official ver.
Okay, then we'll modify that to include pending the final review and approval of staff and legal.
And approval by the Board of County Commissioners. So it's just not, once the MOU is approved by legal, then we'll have to come to this board for final approval. And obviously, the EMS companies will sign it as well.
And the mention of a developmental plan that Commissioner Harvey was mentioning and Commissioner Kiefer, will that also be, needed to be included in the motion?
Yeah, that's the MOU and the policy, part of the legal review.
A policy.
So some policies already exist. I mean, because we're already managing firefighters and work schedules and things like that. So there's a lot of policies that are already going to exist for that.
A comment, not, nothing to add to the motion, but my hope is, as you work on the MOU and discussions back and forth, it's clear from a financial standpoint, those things that we currently pay for that we may not be paying for in the future. And, because if you look at the net cost of $717,000 for 19 employees, that's like $35,000, $36,000 per employee. Obviously, employee salary benefits a lot more than that per employee. So just if you could take, make extra detail when it comes to the cost, changes and, changes that are coming down to the companies financially in terms of staffing subsidies in particular. So there's no ambiguity.
On that regard, the question I have, I guess, is we're taking over billing and, you know, the, obviously, between billing and collections, are we, we thinking that through those billings that much of this cost will be covered by billing for services?
So the 80% that we spoke about of net billing is what we're driving against, the total cost that Commissioner Kiefer was just alluding to. It's, it's cost more than $36,000 per position.
Right.
It's about $91,000 per position. That 80% is that delta that's making that part of it up. We are hoping that there can be some improvements in efficiencies and, and maybe even the collection rates of billing. And that's probably a question for the CFO. But we don't know that yet because we don't have our hands on that information. We're not running those processes. It could be that they're as efficient, as effective as they can be already in the current way they are.
Currently, if I'm, if I'm not mistaken, many of these companies do an annual fund drive. And I think if you're a subscriber to that on an annual basis and then you call for services, you either get a reduction or maybe even services at no, no charge. Is that, will that, I mean, is your thought process that may or may not continue?
Our intent would be that could continue. And again, the numbers that you have before, you already have all of those variants in those.
Okay.
But current, current billing at the companies is collecting between 40 and 48% on those. And when you're talking about improving the, the billing number, if we add up to 50%, that would be considered very good in this field? Okay.
And when you get to the larger companies, you know, and the system becomes more holistic, so to speak, that's when those changes, even though it looks like a relatively small change, talking about six or seven million dollars of revenue in the system, net revenue in the system itself. So when you're talking to even a 6% or 7% change there, it's a fair amount of money.
Yep. Okay.
I hear the first and the second.
Yep. We're ready to vote.
Yep.
All in favor by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you very much.
Just, just so, you know, obviously, we're moving forward with these two companies. In the future, if there are additional companies, then staff will come back, staff and the fire and rescue officials will come back. Same discussions with the Commissioners about any future companies. So we're going to go with these two and any, any future things will come back as a, as a separate agenda item to talk to Commissioners about.
Absolutely.
Sure. And if, if I could just remind, while we're, while we're in public session for the public, that these volunteer corporations are still going to have to raise funds to maintain their building, buy ambulances and buy equipment. So it's augment of the volunteer system. It's not a takeover of the volunteer system. So when there are solicited fund drives or out there flipping hamburgers or whatever the fundraiser may be, the support still needs to come in from the community because there is still a large burden on the volunteers running those companies to provide those necessary items.
Well said. A partnership.
Yes, sir.
It's a partnership. Okay, good.
It's very, very important.
Mr. President, both, both companies were represented here. I don't know if they want to say anything, if it was allowable.
I'm fine.
Yeah, it's fine.
Please do.
I just want to thank the board. They've finally opened the door and come in. We've waited a long time. We're hard on this. This is a good day in town.
Yes, thank you. I'm happy that I'll be able to report back to our staff that, that we're going in the right direction. I know they'll be very pleased. This is what they want to hear. They want to hear they're going to be county employees. So I'm very happy as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.